But I appreciate your sentiments. I know you were a big part of it, so we really appreciate you as well. Any other public comments in the room or online? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda from staff or council?
Earlier today, we talked about some restrictive signage done by Lawrence Boulevard. And I think after you and I had talked about some different things that might come into play with planning, that I think we should try and put this on the agenda tonight, so we can maybe put a hold on it for a month, so we can gather some more information. So it would be Lawrence Boulevard residential parking only.
Okay, so we'll make that general business ten four, and you can maybe give us kind of a synopsis in the future for it. All right, any other changes?
So on the liquor license for Big Joe's Pizza at the top of the state, it's going to be a three-month liquor license, so we'd like to have pre-ordered at three seventy-five, so on sale, off sale, it's okay.
Yeah, pre-ordered to the end here.
Yes, or to the end of the license.
Yes, got it. All right, that makes sense to everybody that's happened recently. Okay, any other changes? Okay, hearing none. I reiterate everything Brenda said, and especially want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce that city gets credit sometimes, or credit is due certainly. Our staff deserves an immense amount of credit for getting the roads cleared and the parks cleared, that the record snowfall beforehand, but I think a lot of people think the city plans for the Build Land Festival, and it's the chambers effort, and they have had great participation in their committees. There's been a lot of volunteers and for business, business participation, but also just individuals. It was a great day. Brenda said, I don't know what Tony's blood pressure was doing shortly before that weekend because of the weather we faced, but it was beautiful. It was a beautiful backdrop, all those drinks. I said, you know, often times it's not a ton for kids to do, and yet we had all these drip or these snow piles all the time the kids were playing on, like they'd been planned that day. So it turned out effortlessly, I don't know if they've estimated numbers, attendees, I would guess that's kind of hard to do, but I heard the picking tournament was successful, the plunge was very successful, the, all the new events appeared to be very successful, so a lot of volunteers and running to that, and we're so appreciative. In gratulations to all of our WK athletes who've been at the state this last month, since we've met, the dance team went to state, Chris, Chris, and one of the very partly wrestler, and the bowling team went to state, so they may have heard a lot of sirens and and we would really appreciate EMS sending them uptown, because I know that's really meaning a lot to those staffers and their families. We have a legislative update. It's not really clear where we'll go at this point, but we did have Representative Campbell under her visit, who must have been a nice tour with Jeff and John Primar and I, all over Wabashaw. We wanted her to understand the priorities we have, which are the two bonding projects, one being the Highway sixty reroute, and the other being part of the court development request, our court development project. She appears to be tracking, definitely good vision, it's to be a part of what you would expect out of a new legislature. They have a record number of bills to manage, and it's a case that no one has seen before. I think people, the sentiments about what that means are mixed. Pam said if I move upgrading, there's been a lot of politics being going on, which she advised us that we need to be patient with our Highway sixty reroute ask. It was not in the twenty, what's that, twenty twenty-one request, which would have been a twenty twenty-two bonding bill that failed. So since it wasn't in that bill, it's not in the new bonding request that the House has passed. Even though the House got even more Republicans on board than was anticipated, or anticipated to get quite a bit of pushback in the Senate. So we don't know where that initial bonding will go. I think we can understand that our project, one isn't part of that bill, what we're concerned about is that the PFA was the Public Finance Administration with the A stand for. The PFA funds that allow us to do low-interest lending on our street project are in the bonding bill. So if you're in regular communication with your legislator, please remind them how important that is to our street project for twenty twenty-three. We are crossing our fingers that everything goes fine, and then at some point they negotiate something that includes that PFA funding, which would include our loan interest lending and a lot of other cities' projects. So I think that's sufficient for now. We will hope in the head when we have some better sense of where our direction should be. There's some talk about a second bonding bill. There's conjecture that the Republicans are anticipating the Democrats will try to pay per cash, which I think they won't like there enough, so it'll be a whole new renegotiation if that occurs. So I think, as Caroline pointed out, if we did a hearing this year, that's a successful year, and we've been advised from legislative staff that that looks possible. If we can get on the bonding tour again in the hall, that would be excellent, because there will be new representatives that did not see our project. And we also have the benefit of having our project separated. Last time, it was a little confusing, we knew that, but we had both the port and the highway system reroute as a package deal. I think we're in a better position to exploit that project to the bonding committee, if we're lucky enough to get them here again. So Caroline has talked to some of her colleagues, administrator colleagues, who also are bonding projects, and they are ramping up their legislative action, including, you know, up to thirty visits at the legislature. We don't quite know what we should do. We're not working in the direction of a lobby, a lobbyist who's paid to work for us, but we have the you know, Gnu clean heavily on the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the League of Minnesota Cities for not only kind of administrative advice, also for legislative advice, and they're great. So I think what we'll need to do is once everyone has their head around or a visit on, they'll learn what the next action may be, and what the budget, where the budget lands, then they'll have some strategy for us. One of the CDMC attorneys said that there is a specialist at UDMV who deals with transportation, so when when the bond bill happens, or doesn't happen, the budget is established, they'll, the programs, the transportation program, they've got some money to allocate, and then he would be of useful conversation for us to have at that point. So we're doing what we need to do, and probably have to get aggressive and do the whole show again, which I think is, that never is a bad thing, and to get clarified for everybody what the priorities are. So that's what we're hoping, and I think Representative Alder was as straightforward about that as she possibly could be, and she can completely get what we're trying to do here. I didn't think she was in we didn't have to explain it, really. We did, but I think she understood it. So that's known in the legislative chair. Anyone that I haven't seen from general, we have a lot of meetings that we the committees report on, so committees, utility.
Yeah, we met yesterday, largely talked about approving the bidding for the athletic park, which we'll get to in general business, so that was it.
John is not here, and I should have worked on it. I was gonna say something about housing, Jeff told me of this. There's lots of progress happening in the Housing Committee. There was, as maybe you remember, grant fees that came from this, is from the Smith and the Regional Foundation to help us with the housing study. The housing study is underway. We got a glimpse of the data in terms of sort of what is the capacity for certain types of housing in our community, what is our community sort what's our direction, what are we trying to achieve? We hear from our employers, and we work for housing, we hear that from our schools. So we just got a preliminary look at that data. They're further reminding some strategies for them to choose from. This is kind of how the Greater Minnesota Futures Project worked, but it was it wasn't a formal, you know, process that the city managed, because it was a grant, it was our technical assistance grant test. But this is familiar to me. They're gonna look at all the data and hear what our committee has said, and then give us some strategies to essentially choose from, and that will be in the direction of the committee, the broader transfers between most of the stakeholders. So I look forward to that, and then we'll, there'll be both a some type of, we don't need to get, but some type of community forum where the communities will be educated in the findings of the study, and also has an opportunity to weigh in. And then separately from that, a developer forum, which I think she's calling a that does have a name. Kathy has branded that, essentially an opportunity for developers to come to the table, once our strategy is outlined as a community and pro-educative developers on opportunities. So that's good work. Thanks to Jeff and Caroline and others who've gone to the institute meetings and ratchets, that has been very productive. That's why I'm welcome for. And then did you want to say anything about the HVAC grant, or has that been reported on before?
No, we haven't. We're just underway with the HVAC grants, and we've got a lot of interest this time, because words, words out, so that's going well. I'm not managing it as much where CED is, which is great, and so we're kind of in the process of taking an applications right now. And that's, we, with our new amendment, it's up to twenty-five thousand dollars for HVAC replacement for any city of Wabashaw business. You have to prove how the HVAC replacement will improve air quality. You have to deal with lots and lots of paperwork, but it's not too bad. And we originally were doing like required match, and that's away, gone away, basically. We're doing first come, first served basis. So right now, I think we have applications from Slipperies, Marco Realty, Bitter Insurance. We have one just acquired another insurance agency. The Chinese restaurant applied. Main Street Kitchen is interested. So, and then, yeah, so let's, Gurkens applied. So.
Good. I'm glad. I'm sorry, that was such a painful experience, but I have a feeling that Caroline educated the Department of D on that, because it was just, would be really overwhelming to manage it below the small units value, and that's maybe that is maybe figure out some of that, or
It's a corge, yeah.
Thanks for being so quick. All right, and let's see, we'll go to streets or parks, or whatever you want to do first.
Well, part four meant last month, we talked about the the new signage for the NEC dock. Figured we could get a good start on that. I believe it's gonna say six-hour docking, no overnight docking, and no swimming. And then we talked about public restroom, moved popcorn parks. The only thing that they were concerned with was that it might be right up along Pembroke Avenue. We know it was, you know, we're planning to have it back in the green space, they're having to build that. Malone Park sewage pump came in, I believe it was gonna be around ten thousand dollars for that for restroom sewage pump instead of thirty, so that's good. Seasonal pool staff, advertisements are out, so if you wanna be a lifeguard or work at the pool, be sure and submit an application. Streets, we did go through the street project, basically just that pertains to the street commission. Storm sewers and storm drains, curb bump outs, different things like that. And then they removed that for approval to the city council for tonight. And then the other thing that we'll talk about tonight was a request for residential parking only in Lawrence Boulevard from the Eagle Center down about three blocks, so that's all we have. Oh, I just wanted to say
You gave that a motion.
Yeah, they, they after a lot of discussion, and we had one board member leave early, so I kind of, you know, it kind of was hard to make a decision with the number of people that we have, but it came down to no signage for no Eagle Center parking in those areas, and that hasn't been talked to about the Eagle Center. I don't think that they would probably like the wording of that signage, so that's why I want to revisit it. Look at their requirements, and just hold on for a month.
We'll look some direction that.
Or the signage.
Don't let me forget. That's, okay, thank you, fun. Ryan, did you have updates for us?
So, with the real estate commission, we have something on the agenda for tonight. It's seven o'clock, and I'm representing to Wabashaw Township, which will be the last township presentation that I'll be doing. I went to the last night, and then Greenfield is asking to come back both on the ninth, March eighth, and their March fourteenth. On both at seven thirty, that Greenfield Township called to answer the question of doing, giving them more information that they would need. The contract other than that. Anything else from me?
No, I think we're resting a bit on that part of the commission, so I think it'll probably be more next month than the one that.
I'm working on outlining a memo for the business side of it. So I can just write you about this commission and the council, that these are the things that we've accomplished, these are the things that we are in progress, these are the things that we need to work on, and that we're trying to kind of have an idea of where we're at with the recommendations from that study.
Great. Let's see some with Ari on the agenda. It's great. All right, thank you.
A good question. We're, you know, we plan on going to the March fourteenth meeting at Greenfield. What's going on the ninth?
So, there work is gone through the end of this little cycle in the fourth, I don't know when it comes back, but there's somebody else who on this during the forum, and when I talked to her yesterday, she said that she thought it would be beneficial that I came on the ninth, too, because that's technically when they proposed and set their budget, and then they voted on it on the fourteenth, so she said that she thought it would be more beneficial to do there on the ninth, because that were more questions we had versus the fourteenth, which was just a a vote, but I told her that I would come to vote, but there's been extra questions for the rest.
I'm wondering if others could attend, because I can't attend, and
This is what time is it now?
It's summer, but it's not there yet.
Because I was surprised at me. Yes, we got some question is, how is the levy set, you know, so but I don't think Greenfield will ask us that, but you know, they just didn't know how it's gonna impact their taxpayers, and I can't really exactly answer that, but they were like, well, I'll be okay with this, and you know, we just said, with your tax, I'll be, you know, so. But I think for this March ninth meeting, it's just about making sure we end up in their budget.
Yeah, I should go again.
Thank you. All right, and then.
So we met on the fourteenth of February, we talked about the small limited mining ordinance. Public hearing on that, no public comments. I think we've been working on that for five, six months, probably like that. First read is tonight, I see, and so our March meeting has been canceled, so our next meeting will be until
Yeah, all right, so not further committee report, is there any good news? Anybody else have any recent community that they want to share? So Caroline, we have a sort of kind of a fun.
So we've been, we're still under negotiation with the owners, and it's basically what are the terms they're gonna operate our court? What are the terms of that agreement? So I would say we have concurrence on most of it, but we are gonna be still talking more about that, and I
Sorry, I'm down.
I think that probably is probably on it, wait, so. You know, it's a complicated project. They're selling us the land, and then we are in exchange having an agreement that they're gonna operate, you know, the movement of sand. So I'll just stay tuned on that, and then we're getting, reworking our violence signs and pricing on that. I think Mayor Durand addressed the Highway sixty. All I would say is we're just rewriting that bill so that the highway is a request, and the other associated work, there is another request. And we talked to Ben Arceno Rep about also putting in another federal juror. And we met with Minda, and again, they just recommend the state bonding approach for that project. And we also, Kristi Trusco is working on, and Brian Ball is, let's say that the highway, we're five years out, could other housing and commercial development happen now, and what would be required in terms of utilities serving the site? Et cetera, so I think that's also progress to say what could be done now of that site, because there are some portions of the site that are close to utility, but maybe it is the bill that's gonna be required to bring it up. And then we have a Wabashaw Calog Trail steering group meeting at the end of the month, talking about a potential financing strategy to build a bridge in Calog that would ultimately connect the two communities for ATV, snowmobilers, and bicyclists and walkers. And we're gonna be meeting with the county. They've already, you know, indicated that they would maybe participate and be our applicant for funds, but they're not interested in paying to maintain it or paying for the project, so. We're kind of like, well, we'll get a shot in here, but it's gonna be a lot of money, and, but we've got some excited groups. There'll be Greenfield representation, Calog has been the lead author on a lot of the grants. And then short-term rentals will receive notification shortly of the new registration requirement. I think it's, what is it, maybe like eight, even tomorrow? Tomorrow, everyone will be getting letters to mail of the new registration required. So if you get phone calls on that, I think we put just City Hall's number on the, on the letter. But, and then I, after a lot of work, we can say that we are, we have everyone up to date for twenty twenty-two, so all known people renting their Virgo in twenty twenty-two are up to date. And then, so, that's good.
Good, good. I'm trying to add all the pressure on, because we need, we need timber, we're on.
You're ready?
Yeah, three, four, every one, fifty percent plus one?
Nope, you're four.
Okay, all right, then we're
Right, super.
Because I was like, oh no, we lost our guy. All right, so consent is, lots of, lots of consent agenda. Consent agenda items have been discussed, but we have the first read for the small limited mining ordinance. We have approval of EMR on call pay increase, which I think Ryan has been helping out with us. We have the application for appointment to the Ammu Commission, which is Jane Lander, thank you, Jane. We have city council minutes from February to March warrants. We have an assortment of gambling and liquor licenses for nonprofit and business. We have the central Wabashaw Grant Amendment, that's an extension from my grant, which otherwise ended in September of this year, to end instead in September of next year. They're having delays related to joint materials. We have the approval of the application for a part-time ALS license, which was, as Brian indicated, recommended in the business analysis. And we have the reception center contract with Wabashaw County that we're all and there's our round. We're just, we don't even consent. We have a motion to approve consent.
That's a move.
Sort of, with a motion to continue, a second from Jeff, any further discussion? Right, all of the favors, say aye.
Aye on it.
Upload same sign. All right, we do not have a public hearings, right? General business one, this is the approval of purchase of the new ambulance, we'll let Ryan again talk us through this summary, I have a summary.
All right, so with our other ones, it's due to the first of twenty twenty-five. What's happening right now in the industry is that they're experiencing significant difficulties in giving them chances, which is often their timeframe, where it can extend. When we started working, it was twenty-four months, and now it's twenty-four to thirty months from the time we ordered the truck till it's delivered. So that's why we're a careful approach for one pattern to address now, so we can actually take delivery of it in twenty twenty-five. There's also been a significant amount of increases when I was in two thousand and eleven, twelve. I got two ambulance of the cat that was spared here for two hundred and sixty-five thousand. On this current one that I left the bid for is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I know our capital improvement is three hundred. Every bid that I received was all over three hundred thousand. So, there's a nine percent increase in February. This bid was the only bid who said that they would hold our current bid and not increase the price. Now we have the bear, the only manufacturer that we had bids from that been inside of the module is all aluminum, which is much more concerning, and with renary of both the court members and what else, you before we had MedTechs, both those companies are no longer in business. So the thought process of going up with a little bit higher end ambulance is that not only can you remount it more times, which in the long run saves money, they save up thirty percent over a older ambulance. So with all aluminum, you can remount it, you know, up to three or four times where ambulance chest that has wood in the back, you can only mount it once, and then you have to start over. So it's a little more upfront, but in the long term, it's would save us money.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan?
I was just gonna say, we, we should give them some information on Thursday and Tuesday about this ambulance and make a point of it, because what we're asking from them won't even cover any of this.
Yeah. And that was, in our meeting last night, I was pointed out from here, you know, this is how much our next ambulance is going to cost, and that's not part of what we're asking for.
I don't comprehend still on hand, but what is the limit on your, what is your grant request to USDA?
We have this, okay.
Did there max on it?
Thirty-five percent, right, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, that.
So it's, you know, Caroline was sort of that shoot, that was Tony and Joe before, so once we did
Yeah.
going to that, and so how old are the current ambulance? The one that we're moving is the twenty-twelve. So that's thirteen years old when it's replaced, and then the current one is fourteen, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So the doubt of all of the new orders, it's not fully dragged, and also the side step that didn't do a drop step, so it's significantly higher to try to get from the back to the ambulance person are one that we're going to replace.
And you're saying that this new one, you want to get the ambulance body itself can be installed on another chassis, when the next chassis needs to be replaced, is that what you're saying?
Correct. And so with that, too, this timeframe to serious that is two years, maybe you don't catch up, I, that I don't know. But with that, a remount of that reserve rooms that were painted nine days from a time of the chest.
So, how much of the cost savings is that over a new one?
It's a thirty percent.
Thanks, Sam, for explaining this.
When you check this out, Ryan, do you expect this out for the part-time ALS?
So the only thing that wouldn't be in there for part-time ALS would be a med ball for in my house. I mean, in this, we're reusing the oxygen and the power law cat system from our old ambulance to help save on money versus if we were to replace the power of cats in the oxygen, we're looking at about six thousand dollars, so by reusing it which they remember that way.
And Ryan, we can address this offline, but I did get a question from the USDA, making sure that your return and process follow our policies of either utilizing statewide buying process, or you got sufficient with quotes, so it looks like you got it through a buying or
Yes, I did finally approve that one thing.
All right, so we'll just have to clarify that, and so after this approval tonight, we'll put together, we need Joe's actually quote on his police car as well, put together another application for the USDA.
Let's go ahead, yeah. Do you have a motion for the purchase of any ambulances?
Just for clarification, by ordering now, you not paid for until it's delivered. So we're still paid for all of that twenty twenty-five hundred, we're not just gonna order now.
There's no doubt, man.
No.
Good motion.
It's planned for, move.
Go second.
I'll second.
Good motion from Ryan, a second from Tim. Any further questions with Ryan? Second.
I think we just need to make sure we start adding capital and expenditures into what we're gonna be asking townships to pay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good point. I mean, I think originally it was kind of, let's get a foot in the door with the townships, which I think is great for, we've had great discussions and stuff, and then I think I agree, the next time it's gonna be but we also need X full of capital and room as well, but, but again.
Right, yeah, yeah, support that.
Can we bring, we'll put down that law here.
Yeah, so the med hall is supplied high masks, the thing where it does a max boxes for prior premises in. And they only sell directly to the customers, so which would be us, they will sell it to the don't say manufacturer. So we would have to buy it separately, but then we'll rescue their shop up in Little Canada, we'll be able to reinstall that there. It's going to have a place to be rewired, so whenever that may be, we would get that, it's already thought about, but involved itself is not part of this.
All right, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thank you very much. Thank you for being ahead of this. All right, it's irresponsible to the All right, so general business ten two is our plan for certification to operate a bidding in downtown street project. We have Katie here with us.
Katie, if you want to just connect to the TV, and then I'm gonna fill out your PowerPoint and have people follow on online. There might be a couple of tweaks to it. Oh, that's okay. But you should, I think I can just connect, or let me try it.
I just want to get, no, I arrived.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay.
I never given HPC update, I really should, but just to give some context, this, the heritage preservation committee has already reviewed the street skate elements, and we did that with a great presentation by Katie. Answering some questions about the scale relating, these are gonna be poles that are to be taller, you have the option to alter the land range advised by the HPC, one of the choices given to us, very similar. Um, so we're very much in keeping with the lands, we do not change heritage park. But other than, I think there were a whole lot of questions for Stefan. Um, for heritage preservation commission for new. New elements, street skate elements, we have a street skate, what do we call it, Wendy? We have a, we have a. Guidelines document, we have guidelines, we have design guidelines, so we urge people to follow their guidelines, and the team has obviously done that for us. So whatever, whatever else we're doing, you know, we're not altering historic structures, um, and so Katie basically advised with the. With the larger broader committee that was, you know, lots of stakeholders, lots of community stakeholders had, um, brought to the table as advisable, and HPC is basically on board.
Thanks, and I hope we will go through all the new sounds getting high, you didn't have an option to be for questions.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor Council. Tonight we're here to, uh, have a new, uh, approval plan to inspect the number of, uh, the vans for the street project. Um, you are asked to approve a resolution or have a resolution with this act, and knowing that it was in the next action, you do not have a resolution. That resolution is part of the four twenty nine second profit that we've been following, which, um, that's necessary to, to do with, that way you have a rev, a revolution of this. Uh, starting with project summary, uh, just sort of a. Background, um, if you recall, uh, the main driver for this project is the sewer and water. Um, the water's infrastructure is running a hundred years old. It has been aging, it has been experiencing water mainways, we have, uh, infiltration into the sewer. Um, and so that really the main driver for, I call it based part of the project, which is shown in the yellow, uh, it's nine blocks of full reconstruction. Um, that would entail none of the waters, sanitary sewer, but the streets, the storm sewer, and the sidewalks. Um, throughout the design process, um, there were a couple of pieces that sort of added on or expanded in this project. Uh, with the street skate committee, we discussed, um, opportunities to create a from non, uh, from Main Street to the river, so that area was added in front of sidewalk improvements. Um, and then we also go over tonight, some, uh, areas within heritage park and making that work, like obligation to have some role for the, um, improvements. Outside of the base project, we also talked about adding some other elements to this project while the contract was, was there in town, so that includes. Uh, second speaker image, um, so we will bring the intersection of second and Amrook and, um, we're replacing the sewer, sorry, the storm infrastructure there, and so. Uh, there is currently a, a significant drainage issue outside of the media of large concrete, so part of this project will, will be expanding, uh, the storm sewer, that's freedom, that, uh, sanitary sewer or water. Um, up through that block, um, and adding some intakes to that, during that, that area. Um, the alley, alley, um, is in rough shape, um, and so giving some replacement within that alley to make that, that surface better. And then there were a number of pedestrian ramps that were identified that do not currently need AD standards, so those are two, seven, the parking garage, depending on the unit. Uh, we've got a pedestrian ramp, uh, over at the NEC. Uh, and then one, um, being in the direction steps in both of those, and so, um, addressing all of those part of this project. Um, as part of the project, um, we did, uh, talk about street skating, and as we noted, there was a street skate, uh, committee that looked at. The street skate elements, they were never, is in, uh, fair amount of downtown, we wanted to show the most elements, uh, who will be in this project. Uh, coming out of that subcommittee, um, there were, um, discussions about how the down comes should look, um, what you're seeing here is what the typical block plan is. That came out of that committee, it addressed things like the street skate furnishings, um, it looked at trees, and what you see noted is that they're very focused area for the tree without holes. Um, and talk about the color of the concrete or adding concrete accents throughout the corridor. Um, I do not have in my presentation, but as part of your packet, there was the full landscape plan was included that shows how these elements will be. Applied throughout the corridor and where the street skate elements, um, bring away.
And the, the color of the concrete was changed from.
So, I guess we want to confirm that this evening, and I think there was some initial discussions that I wanted to incorporate the red, because some of the, um. With red and hues that come through it, um, one of the other color discussed at the street state, street skate committee was a darker red depth of Nashville, as we did at the NEC, and that was a recommendation that came out of. The HPC, yeah, it's something that's a more reliable.
If we're gonna not consent, what's a more reliable? I guess I want to say tint, but, yes, the tint is more reliably the color that you think it's going to be versus red, which. As you can see, and I haven't examined it, but we looked at the aerial picture of. Heritage Park can actually end up probably pink, even though you specify red, so. The consensus was the degrade is more predictable, and the purpose is to provide accent, it's not meant to mimic the red or anything, so.
Um, reviewing the furnishing, we've mentioned those, there's a garden part and some guideline, but, uh, for many reviews. And we will be, uh, the, the, there are two seaters, but it has a aluminum frame, uh, hardcore black with a cyclo classic. Flat, that's a seater color. Uh, tree, tree rate will be somewhat, uh, tree rates are fairly baked with. Uh, we have core ten now, which is what you can see there, it, it comes in and it looks roughly, but what we're having is. In the patina, that looks more dark gray or black, which you see on, on land holes in, in iron structures. Uh, the waste receptacle, uh, will be consistent with what you currently have, which would be, uh, steel distracted line, um, with that powder coated black. And we surface modeling with the, uh, red color. And then lastly, the bike rack, um, was selected as a minute, then was designed to help coordinate with. The various elements of them that found time that also need certain. Light was discussed, and currently you have five single eight one lights per block. Um, and in order to, uh, address a couple of issues or concerns with those, one is kind of reducing light per block, um, two. Um, you can see it here, and then make sure your current hole, um, currently have the dinner holes, um, and they're mounted a little bit lower. Um, and that starts to encroach in the pedestrian, uh, area, um, it also becomes unstructured for equipment, uh, so it's a little more, but, so what it ends up happening is you start to get. Uh, damage to those, and, and so part of the strategy is to get those up higher, um. It also provides, uh. Better, better lighting for the downtown. And so what, what has been recommended is a four two foot pole, um, with the current lights, uh, fixture, which I should talk a little bit more of, the light fixture. But what I don't know is, what you see here in this figure, that light fixture would be about on top of where your current light fixtures are. For, for sense of game. We're talking a little bit about the fixtures, but one of the points of conversation that was presented in the committee was probably to ensure that the light, uh, the light is a little up, it, it, it's pointed down. Um, and so trying to keep with your current like fixture style, uh, unfortunately, the specific fixture that you have do not allow for it to be swept with one of it. Some in effect, you do, like, for that fashion that we have, but what they do have as an option is one on the cap that helps you focus the light down. In addition, with this cap, the, the LED fixture sits up in that fixture and points down, and there's, uh. Pattern that you order, but then that helps you point it down and out in the next. Uh, and the last one here, there was a discussion about dark, uh, lighting and dark sky combined. Um, and the light fixture that sort of closely matches what you have, which you see here in the picture, have a, a wider rim on it to help make that. Uh, more prevalent, uh, having a discussion that the HPC, um, the option number two would recommend. Right, the next piece that came with the lighting fixture was the color of the white block. As we move into LED, we, we're probably going to hear that there's different colors that you see out there from. Warm light all the way out to white, that look very, very light on some, on a blue scale. Uh, we currently are using what's called a three thousand ton, and then you can see that's kind of on the lighter, or on, on yellow and spectrum, and so we're. So that's, uh, that, that look that you can. Alright, talking a little bit about heritage park, as we were moving through design, um, we were trying to, ever, we currently had plans to replace sidewalk, you see this kind of green line in that area. Um, leaving curve through here and incorporating bump outs, as we were kind of moving through that design phase. Uh, we started to talk about trying to create a more consistent pedestrian walk for here, um, the pedestrian ramps for this, we're gonna have it to point directly at each other. Um, and then there's also a bit of some discussion about the step down curb, and I have a couple of pictures in here, so you can see how that step down curb. Comes around the corner and extends to the wall here. And then over on this side, the step down curb comes through this yellow area here. And so, as, as we moved, um, through, we wanted to try and create more consistent pedestrian space, and in doing so, that required us to elevate that area up about six inches to five block height. Um, and it started to impact the base of the clock tower. Um, the other piece we're looking at is given the extent of the brick that's left and its degradation, that we want to try to, uh, but address all of that with this project and bring in concrete. So with that, we're looking at, uh, this concept for heritage park, we're going to incorporate, um, this gray area, we let what originally was. Planned and completed with the project. Um, and it brings the current line from May straight through. Um, we utilize a rival of a curb through this area to still maintain access for maintenance vehicles and other potential, uh. With food trucks, et cetera. Um, and so we could use this area. Then to address the area that's left, we bring through the, uh, national, they're saying red, uh, concrete. Um, and bring the, the gray con, just plain concrete down, and let it, that existing, uh, curb down here. Now, in doing so, that means we have to look at the clock tower base, um, the, the clock tower itself is a foundation, we need it in the spot, then we look to address that, that base. So given that, there were two options that were, were presented. Um, the first option incorporates elements, uh, the, obviously the tall building in South William, it's got a stacked red brick with a limestone cap. Um, that would create a seating area, uh, around the base of the tower. Um, it'll be a little bit taller, and then you have, uh, black metal, uh, bench that would go bring around that. Uh, to maintain the seating that you're going to be carrying. Option breaker is in, uh, a little bit shorter, but, uh. Still keeps the seating element, but with the limestone block, and it plays off of the limestone edge of the buildings. We have a landscape area in the middle. Um, that would build up that area, this, this bench is about twenty four inches in height, so it's a little bit taller than typical seating, but it's still functional in that regard. Um, that area in the middle has to be built up in the landscaping, uh, to address the foundation that's under. The block top, the concrete dips under here, so that, that.
Like a six to nine inch burn, right?
Right, not a big, yeah, about, yeah, about six inches, yeah, that we need to build up. Um, this option does incorporate the seating with skater, we, uh, cutouts to discourage fate words from coming to the ones in there eventually. Favor. Um, so between these two options, you're looking at about a sixty to seventy thousand dollar cost for the project. Um, with other elements that we had originally planned within this project, um, that everyone learned, we, we, this fit within that. Now, the cost difference between option A and B is about ten thousand dollars, that'll include the foundation that's required with, with option A. Uh, coming out of the HPC, they were doing both of these, and option B was.
And is the least expensive. Would you put, or, 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 finding that, half of that?
Moving on a little bit to the baiting, and I know this has been a big question, but information has been sent out, but. Given the extent of the work we do in these seven phases, um, within this project. Um, essentially what happens is work happens within one phase before they get in contact with you on to the next. Now, that being said, there are stages within each phase, meaning that, for, for removals, then they come and do utility work, then they go, they put the road stack up. Uh, and then they come back and do sidewalks, so there's. Each property, you know, there's going to be multiple stages provided, the property within each phase. Um, specific timing is really dependent on the content and schedule. We can set phases, we can set recommendations on, on timing of that phase, working days, et cetera. That the specific phasing, or the specific schedule they can, of the work won't come until after we select a contractor and we meet with them. Um, that being said, general anticipated timing will show up here for big one on Main Street, uh, that will be next spring into summer. Uh, phase two would be Amrook Avenue, that was starting to move into fall, and then phase three would be Bridge Avenue, um, we have a strange. Okay, so, that's our current estimated product cost, a little bit back, um, and. We, we look at our, frankly, based on the, the last year of experience that we've had. Um, we did see a slight increase in a number of, uh, in one specific area, which is a storm sewer improvement, looking with, uh, present for concrete, pipe, and concrete products be. Be higher right now, so that is driving a lot of the cost increase that can see here, originally we were looking at eight point one, equal to two million dollar budget, we're not. That being said, um, with this, uh, there is funding that the city received from Linda through a local, um, improvement program, that's at the two of one point two five million dollars. And there's also funding coming from the county, uh, to also avoid the county loan, which is not four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that, there we went through the financial.
Sure. Um. Well, I guess, you know. Um, we went through everything with, um. Mike, I guess I have to reshare. I guess before we, maybe let's finish. Katie's presentation, and then I'll switch over, switch over to her, so we're not. Don't put that out. Okay.
Just a couple of side note next steps. Uh, we need to submit the plan for regulatory review, so that because of the state aid, it's LRIP funding, it has to actually go to, to Linda places, uh, for review. Uh, with the PFA financing, this has to go through the NCA and the. Once we get the reviews, um, and it goes back, you'll be up for another having a bid, which is a three week advertisement, um, if we need a settlement, then we'll, we'll have to bid, I think. Once we have the minutes, we'll come back to you, where this will be in May, um, we will start to have some more outreach with the remaining, the property.
Yeah, any questions, okay, so that is like, any questions about. HPC discussion, anything with, you know, this features that. Yeah, the, the members of council who participated aren't here, Dean is on, but, uh, Dean was on the street state committee with me, as was Craig. Um, and member of the HPC, and members of the community broadly. There's been a lot of discussion about the features, but members of council have not an opportunity to ask about that.
We had a discussion, the street committee, commission meetings, about the, really the necessity of bike racks. I mean, no one really uses them, and he, and Tony brought the fact that maybe we can get, we can get some portable, and then he was put out. You know, during, during the summer season, and the stores are already, you know, we don't need them, that's, really no one uses a bike rack. And then the way these are, it looks like you've been only putting four, four bikes on each track. And they're gonna put six in there, I mean, it's, not, like you said, it's not much cost, but I mean, it could be an issue with probably snow and.
That's been the consensus, I feel embarrassed to say this, but that's the consensus of the bike lock advocates group as well, is that. There isn't a demand for them. I know that there are, but appropriate feature of plan to urban landscapes, but because of the security of our main street, and because there are other places you can place your bike or lock your bike out, there isn't. An apparent demand for them. So, I would echo the, in an, in an official capacity, that's the discussion of the bike advocates a lot as well. Um, you know, we would have opportunity in the future to probably get them funded for the ones. Get them funded to ship, and they would probably better serve not only our. Streets folks, but our, all of our private businesses who contract us, so.
One point I want to do is that, as you. Although the bike racks are small, um, like, like, they're pretty small and hard to see, we can work with the location, the, the construction process, we make sure that they're located. We can work with the location, the every move in the construction process, make sure that they're located areas that minimize impacts. Uh for operation and that's.
I think the bigger consideration is they don't appear to be needed, and I know that sounds sort of counter to sort of pro bike culture, that's not my intent at all, but the bike advocates have said. You know, that's been a possibility for funding, it's sort of been like, yeah, you know, they don't really get used, so. There was an effort for bike friendly community designation for some of our business, bike business. Bike friendly business designation, and one of the things you could do for a business would be to add a bike rack and people's shirt responsibility. I don't see my customer needing that, so it's not so much the placement of them as the necessity of them, I think that's. And if we need them, I think we would like to have four of those.
You know, to be removed.
I don't think everybody's on the same page. And we would have a.
I I got something to add to that.
Go ahead, Dean.
Uh my argument would be that uh they are needed. Um uh and I'm gonna go from a person in a wheelchair or a scooter or a walker. Um there are times where the bikes are left out on the sidewalk and you can't get by. Um uh able-bodied people can go out on the roadway, whatever, uh we can't, so.
I see.
There is a need out there, but if we can get them cheaper through ship or whatever, that'd be great. But there is a need.
I see what you're saying, Dean, if there if there isn't an indicator that this is a bike rack and you need to lock your bike up too, that you just get thrown down.
Well, I think if you.
I mean, up against an entrance or something.
Just look at the library, the library, uh we never had them for a long time, they were thrown in the way. And now there's bike racks at the library and they're being used all the time, so uh people aren't gonna use them if they're not there.
Yep. Yeah, well, I think pursuit of funds for portable racks is definitely an avenue we can pursue. That's eligible.
I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, no, that's that's very valid. Alright, any other questions?
No, I am, I know we talked about bump outs.
Yeah.
They all get resolved.
Well, I was gonna, I didn't want to derail the conversation, so we the 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 direction the committee, the broader street safety committee gave was. Bump outs were necessary, but not bump outs for the sake of bump outs, not bump outs for design elements, not bump outs because we're trying to create symmetry. Not bump outs even if it means a place to put a tree, bump outs where bump outs should exist. Uh and I don't know if that level of details available to us, I don't know where you're at the design process, Katie, if that can.
Yeah, let me try and switch back over if I have.
It's in the design and shows what intersections.
I think you said needed for ADA, different ADA ramps.
Yeah, so there's there's three intersection, I mean, I should call three and a half. Um.
So the good news in my mind, because I think the bump outs in the scale of the historic main street that we have are intrusive to the sort of scale experience. That's just a perspective I have based on the limited kind of jurisdiction we have as a commission to say that we're. This is putting in the integrity of a district. For me, a district that never had bump outs, that suddenly has a lot of bump outs, is a real change to the integrity of the district. If they're required for accessibility purposes, we acknowledge that, that's that's our, that's a human need. And that's that comes first, nobody wants a main street, they can't traverse, that's no good. So if they're necessary, I think we all understand that that's how that feature makes sense. But we don't desire them to be there for the purposes of. Popping out an intersection as a gateway or closing off an intersection because the traffic was too fast, that's not, that's not our goal. So I didn't, I didn't fully understand where the design was at in terms of how clear you are about which ones you do need for accessibility, okay, so.
So there there, I guess, I wouldn't talk to you, and I would start here. Um your your sidewalks generally are fairly narrow for downtown areas, but in order to meet. In with the pedestrian lines, we are having to incorporate those. For the front outside this intersection, um I'm going to move over to Pembroke and Main. And I'm gonna move back. Walnut and main.
Alright, so it's three down on that one, okay.
Correct. Um we'll be quickly over to the side of the bump out we discussed.
I want to speak about bump outs for a second. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you can, Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, um once again, I'm gonna go from a perspective of being in a wheelchair, scooter, walker, whatever. A younger person and a little child with diagonal parking downtown. Uh in order to see the uncommon traffic, and especially for me, and now I'm talking about my experience. I damn near have to be out in the lane, see what's coming and going. Um you know, I I would agree that bump outs aren't needed if it was parallel parking, you could probably see it better. But uh I'm telling you right now, uh they're needed, but uh you know, uh that's my two cents.
Yeah, are you able to see Katie's slide, Dean, okay?
Yes.
Can you see it, okay? Katie's got it up, alright, great, I'm glad, so this is, it sounded like the the feature we'd be expecting.
So one of the the points that was discussed was turning movements and how some of these tremblers bump outs. So we talked about utilizing the style where you have a drive over curb that comes all the way around the bump out. Um to allow that.
I can't see the slide actually.
Oh, you can't, okay, so what what phase are you on in the presentation?
Is this a non-people for the attachment, the turning movement attachment?
Okay, Carol, that would be, and everyone online, if if you guys can look at the turning movement attachment on the website, it will be there. And I'll pull it on this as well. Yeah.
In the packet.
So this also shows how the pedestrian ramps um work with with pedestrian access route. You have two directions here, and then here's an example of when we have a handstand spot next to the bump out. And having like a folding and everything to to utilize it up on into that pedestrian access road. But it starts to create, it starts to be why that area is losing.
Yeah, I'll just add that at our, your question, oh, did you say that already? That there's bump outs on Main Street, but bump outs everywhere else were eliminated from the top. So.
And this design is actually good for maintenance, because, you know, Tony shouldn't have a problem following these compared to one of the curb waves.
So Dean, I'm sure you know there were bump outs at, like, for instance, at Second and Pembroke, where St. Felix's is, there is diagonal parking. On the second streets, no, it's both, actually, it's both parallel and diagonal, I think, on parallel on the. Right, on the east side of that intersection, diagonal from here.
Pembroke is all.
Pembroke is all parallel, right?
I've never had a problem. I've never had a problem down by St. Doug's Church, because it's all parallel parking and. You're right.
Yeah. Good, okay. So there's no bump outs eliminated at other areas where there's.
Which I think makes sense, I think, yeah.
Even Second Street of Pembroke is good.
Okay, because it's parallel. Good, that helps to explain it that way.
Okay.
So my only other comment is about the phasing plan, and partly is that would it be better off instead of using two years? Year and a half, you know, of twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, to delay it until twenty twenty-four to do it all. I don't think they can do it, the grant is an issue too.
The the L R I P funding has a dead, one deadline of the end of twenty twenty-four. So it is already any work that spills, I could say that on phase one and phase two. We put down the first load of asphalt, uh the first year, we let it go through a few spa cycle, and then we come back the following year. So there will be some work in phase one and phase two um that happens, it's either very quick, they haven't made, they didn't put that that look down.
I maybe misunderstood this too, but I thought there was also an element of, you know, not cutting off the interior commercial districts, so so there are business, everything that had to be a little differently. But it bridged main and Pembroke all are in construction that impedes people's access to whatever alternative. That you guys is.
And we were there to try to balance, um so for example, the elevator during the fall, should it not construct? Trust, when I mean, not that we can't get there, but it might not have a lot of heavy trust to do the. And that as the this spring, we tried to work with the businesses during this. In the festival, so that's kind of why Main Street is going first, it kind of did, Main Street completed primarily before such a test.
So I need to throw this out there, but one thing I hadn't thought, regarding color, colored concrete is the way that that bump up that you show. It's like an island of just plain great concrete to me, it's like, um really, it's it functions, but. Um I don't know if that's, was that considered the possibility of break, you know, breaking up the sidewalk, which is narrow with these little accents. But we're not breaking up a big island of bump up with any colored concrete.
I think, yeah, part of the special with colored concrete is it's one that we over time, and we've been seeing panels of it.
Yeah.
Uh for the designers to come up with, you have uh fairly focused areas that can easily be thinking how it looks like in the future. Whereas for getting more expansive um colored concrete, it's a point of experience that we found in the water, and we later. It's kind of magic, right?
Okay, so um I guess my only thought was. Personally, with the cost increases, like I would recommend we pause the popcorn cart restroom. See where the bids come in at, see what our final financial plan is, because. So ideally, we sort of built a lot of assumptions around approximately eight point one million, and here I'll hear my screen there. Um and what our exercise a few days ago revealed is that. We're in really good shape, okay, just again, because this is the point of contention with, um, oh, I got it next, alright. Um. Oh, I I cannot run the owl too, so. Okay. Um. That was the app. Um. We just. Discussed a lot with with the utilities, actually, because they're. Boy, that's the percentage, the utilities commission is paying for fifty percent of this project through everyone's sewer needs.
That's funny how I would say it.
Yeah, so, or. We, yeah, so um they they reviewed the financial plan, and a lot of the impact of this plan is on. Um necessitating two percent increases, um. Yeah, every year on the. Okay. Two percent increases every year on sewer and water, and just. For added confusion, we added in those big dollar lots that we saw on the presentation about twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight future. Utility needs, and we really probably should be at an annual four percent increase, but we decided we're not going to talk about that. Um so this assumes four percent, but but really to to pay for the street project, it requires. Two percent annual water and sewer increase, so look at how this is funded again. If we obtain the, if this bond bill passes, we would be looking at a two point seven five percent interest rate. That we would get on a twenty years, we've assumed four point five percent that this doesn't come through. And in terms of financing, we would be pursuing some interim financing while we wait to hear about the bonding funds. And then here's the one point seven million kind of built into this uh projection of that grant we talked about. Here's assessments and covering um. Uh some of the debt as well on the project. Um and then sewer water rates, and then the tax levy component. Really is paying for the street skates and foot improvements, the lighting improvements. Um the signage that was conceived, and um that's kind of where, if we want to reduce this top number. By two hundred thousand dollars, we could take out the popcorn cart restroom out of the project. And kind of get it back closer to our original amount, which I put in my staff report as eight point one. So what I thought made sense is not pursue popcorn cart restroom until we get those final bid reports and we can revisit this again. Um but, you know, overall, through Mike, who by and myself kind of coming together. Um this is tax rate projections, we were able to um with our current plan. Um and assumptions, you know, achieve a reasonable um long-term projection on tax rates. Um so as you can see, they go up a little bit in twenty twenty-eight due to future debt, but not necessarily due to this particular.
So this tax rate projection is representative of a plan that conceives that would not deceive our own interest PFA.
Yeah, and that what's gonna be be impacted if we get that PFA. Is we have more water reserves or not. No, we would have more water and sewer funds available, if if the interest rate is not gonna impact property tax levy, because. But it will impact everyone's sewer water bill, so it's really important that that we we want to get it. Um and so this is in the red, this required increase. That's if we take on those other needs that were identified, that Brian said, let's, you know, add those to the plan, let's talk about it. Not that we're necessarily gonna do it, but let's make sure that the utilities is aware of, you know, ten million and potential future liabilities in five years. But um if you take all of that, that extra project out, this project is very horrible for the sewer water.
If you say the extra features, you mean the this sewer related, the the pink project? Elements, the parts that are not part of the project.
This is, remember, we have a talk for both to make about thirty million dollars in potential future utilities.
Yes, the wet utilities as well.
So Brian said, well, if we're talking, we all met as staff, long term, in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, we should probably be talking about. Those wastewater treatment plant um improvements, and so. I don't know, kind of the conclusion there is basically, uh. We would need to be starting now increasing water sewer rates by four percent to be able to take. On ten million dollars of cost in the future, but. I think Brian is talking about like a strategy to, oh, we have brands in there, yeah.
The bonding decision will have a huge impact on it, and Medelia is an example, that article referenced, is doing wastewater, you know, regular treatment improvements. Because of this very scenario, so I don't know, we assume anything, we have, we have to hope and pray we get those PFA. Uh raise, and then we go from there, it's not, that's not a solution for today, we don't, we can't, we just have to just evolve, understand where the bonding would be willing for us, so.
Yeah, so we're assuming in this, assuming no, no bonding, assuming some four point five percent interest rate on a twenty year. And Mike Ubani's um conclusion is. You guys definitely can afford this, where we always want to be as cost efficient as possible, is because we know we have. These future needs always, you know, that are almost overwhelming, so. Um, great.
Any questions about financial? Right, do we have any further information from Katie or you, that's it, right, we've everybody seen the training movements, we get that? Okay, so staff recommendation is committed um. Relating some of the stormwater increases, if we cut popcorn cart, that won't be part of the bid. We wait on for the designers for a bathroom until we can afford these building, and. We don't want to walk here away from. Um so we we kind of adopt the resolution improving these plans with those changes. And operate in the bids for the twenty twenty-three street, including group projects, keep things moving along, as well as final approval of agency's recommendations. Do we have?
We approved it to go out for bids in utilities, we have to get bids if we're gonna do anything. So I would move to approve it, as you stated it, um you might as well throw in and throwing off the the bike racks.
Sure.
As part of that, but uh we can't do anything, so we know how much it's gonna cost, so we have to get bids.
I'll second.
Very good, we have first, Ryan, and the second, Tim, do you have any further, seven questions?
I prefer red concrete, you're gonna enter it for colored concrete, let's get it colored.
Yeah, I I think, I'll say what, full disclosure, I would like the red concrete cheerleader, Katie was probably like, not the red concrete. Somebody's gonna be like, and not go up the red concrete, what we were compelled by, and I don't know how quickly, it can be pulled up again. If you look at that aerial picture of 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 heritage park, you get a really good example of when red was specified and pink is what you actually get. So because our bricks are really orange in downtown, pink concrete against orange is really noticeable. So what I learned from this discussion is you can reliably specify a gray tint and you will get a gray tint. When you specify a red tint, you make it, okay, you're likely to get something that's not exactly what you had in mind, it won't be brick red. Is like.
Or a favor.
Or a favor, so. So I was right there with you, I'm telling you, Wendy and Tony and I were standing in Red Wing and Red Wing has done a very good job with this, they clearly made a. A very, very purposeful effort to as much red as they possibly, but. It's like, so you've done red, okay, so. So we were all in on red, there were a couple votes, no votes on red, that just the gray looks really nice, if you look at what's been achieved in the big Joe alley and it's beautiful, you know, that's exactly what you would expect. So the plaza area will remain red and that will, that will, the park that's now favors with the replaced with concrete will remain red, so that whole plaza. Red, so we have a lot of utilization of red, so. They need direction, we were trying to make it possible to move forward and and have that. So it was a, it was a consensus for innovation versus mine, Wendy's original thoughts with those three like red, so thank you. Any further, all right, all was a favor?
I.
Both same side. Thank you, thanks to everybody who made or not to listening, resisted in all this work and.
That was a I for me too.
Okay, thank you. Um. Okay, thank you, and now we'll hear from Jonathan, we have Spiller, um action needed to offer bidding on the athletic park location providers. And a look at a bid and bid alternate.
I can, you know what, just simplifying, all of this, you just tell me, click.
Now I'm gonna share my screen with our users online.
Yeah, all right, um well, good evening, Mary Council, um thanks for having me tonight. Um and Carolyn, I'm not sure, do you just want me to run through the presentation and then we can talk about some of those changes we've discussed or?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so um. Yeah, tonight we're gonna be looking at um the athletic park. Um looking at the original concept plan that was approved as part of the DNR grant application and some of the changes that occurred. Um during the final design process. Um and then looking at the base bid and several bid alternatives that have been identified um throughout the process. Uh private estimate and uh looking at the schedule and next steps for the process. Um so what we're seeing here is the um. The original uh concept plan for the park that was developed as part of the DNR grant application. Um just highlight a few of the major features of the park, um so we have two little league fields, we have one that's. Uh seventy five foot baseline with two hundred and sixty foot outfield line. Uh one field that's sixty foot baseline with a two hundred and forty foot outfield line. Uh we have a hockey rink that's slightly reduced size from a um. Regulation sized hockey rink, so it's eighty five by one hundred and forty. Uh we have a tennis court and two pickleball courts up on the north side. And then we have a warming house concessions, rest room building, kind of centrally located on the site. Um additionally, we're looking to do some parking lot expansion uh to the existing parking lot servicing the pool in City Hall. Wrapping that kind of around the the west side of City Hall there. And then some uh some sidewalk and trail connection throughout the park um to service the various amenities and provide active here apart. Um so since the concept plan was developed and we moved into final design, um there's been a few changes identified, so this is the current plan. Um I think we can just probably go to the next page that kind of highlights some of the significant.
We also squirted off this far as we were.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll mention that too, um. So some of the significant changes that have occurred um since the DNR um approved plan. Uh number one there, the sidewalk connecting the piers through the park um was originally shown along the south side of the property. Um on the south side of the little league field. And that um, you know, as we worked your final design, it was determined that generally the site is is graded um to drain to the south. And so we really wanted to utilize that area on the south side of the property for stormwater management. Um so in order to do that, we had to shift that sidewalk connection to the north. Um it still provides a good through connection to piers, and then we also looked at changing that from a six foot wide concrete sidewalk to. An eight foot wide the two minutes trail, just to provide more flexibility of use for cyclists and maintenance purposes. Um the second item there is the batting cage, so it's similar to the trail connection. Um this was originally shown on the south edge of the property, um this was shifted to the east side of the the hockey rink. Um to again allow for those stormwater improvements along the south side of the property. Um this also pulls the batting cages a little closer in proximity to the two ball fields, so. Hopefully will provide a little bit more uh seamless use um for the for the users of the ball field. Um the third item, the parking lots, um. On the west side of City Hall there, the original concept plan showed ninety degree um two way parking. In that area, the original parking lot um to the north of City Hall there is a one way configuration with painful parking. So we're continuing, proposing to continue that configuration through the the new lot as well. Um the existing driveway on the south side of City Hall that's only twenty feet wide, so it's not really wide enough to accommodate two way traffic. Um so that also helps with that issue, um so we're essentially looking to have a one way um through parking lot. Uh and then the last item there uh that's shown on this plan is a. Storm sewer connection down to twelve street, so as part of this process, we analyzed anyway, few options for treating stormwater, we looked at utilizing smaller bio retention facilities on the site. Um we looked at connecting to a storm sewer along Pierce Avenue and then the storm sewer along twelve street there. Um the uh smaller bio retention option was ruled out just because this. The site is in a wellhead protection area and um identified by the department out as being in a. A drinking water um management area. And because of that, we're not able to promote infiltration on the site, so that kind of ruled out the bio retention option. Um so we had to look at connecting into the the storm sewer, the structure on Pierce Avenue um was uh the elevation to connect into that was a little too high, so it didn't work with the grading of the site. And the storm sewer along Pierce was just undersized the in terms of capacity to service the athletic field, so. We looked at uh providing a connection in twelve street. Uh and additionally, as part of that, we looked at as a bid alternate, um providing a future trail or a trail connection down to twelve street as well. Um but I am, Carolyn mentioned um that we have since adjusted, um since putting this together, is squaring off the corners of the tennis court. So um that in the future, should there be any that could be um utilized for an alternate use a little easier than than with the angle corners. Um so talking through the bidding of the projects, um so for this process, we had, the majority of the improvements are um included as part of the base bid for the project. So essentially how that'll work is that when the contractor bid on this project, they'll provide pricing for everything that's included in the base bid. And then they'll also be required to provide pricing for items that are included as alternates. Um the, by utilizing the alternates, it gives the city flexibility in terms of identifying which of those. Alternate bids they want to include with the project um as it moves forward. So depending on what sort of pricing you get for some of these alternates, you can choose to um either include those with the project or not use those. Um so the four alternates that we've identified as part of this project are. Um alternate bid one is looking at utilizing post tensioned concrete for this uh for the surfacing of the tennis and pickleball course. The base bid would have those as asphalt, um so it's a little bit different treatment, it's a little more costly, so we'd be looking at that upgrade would be an alternate bid. Um alternate bid two, we're looking at the hockey rink lighting, so the base bid would not include any lighting for the hockey rink facility. The alternate bid would add two um two lighting, two light poles to the hockey rink. Um with some spotlights on top, so I can illuminate that during the interior. Uh alternate bid three is root structures for the four dugouts um that are included on the ball fields. So um that's one item that I think we'll talk about, um some potential changes to. As part of uh as if we move forward with the bid. And then lastly, alternate bid four is the two minutes trail connection down to twelve street.
Yes, the bidding council will also not determine which alternates are for the new base.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
Yeah, um yeah, so just running through generally, um that's been a project cost, so looking at the base bid for the project. Um everything that's that's identified on the plan beyond the the base bids that were identified. Um the estimates uh just over two million dollars um for those improvements. Uh when you add in the bid alternates, those are about two hundred and ninety one thousand dollars in total. Um that brings the total project to just over two point three million dollars. Um some of those other project costs you see down there, there's some um engineering and design. Costs in there as well as costs per excel where we locate their existing overhead power lines, right? And then we subtract out the the matching grant from the DNR for three hundred thousand dollars and we're um. Just under two point four million total for the project. The next slide. So looking at the project schedule and next steps, um so tonight we're asking for the council to authorize um bidding of the project and the bid alternates. Uh from there, we'll finalize the plans um based on council feedback here. Um and host the the project uh for bidding, we have a three week window with a bid opening anticipated for April of this year. Um and then at the May council meeting, award the project and host the construction draft meeting. And um stipulated that the DNR grant part of the project be completed by June twenty twenty four, so we'll be looking at for a. Final completion date on the project. With that, and to open it up for discussion.
I'll I'll address a couple of changes that I can ask that we made. Um, one is that for the four dugouts that we pull out, the four dugouts entirely, not just the rough, but just four dugouts and. The city staff would um work with a local contractor and kind of. Wait, did we decide that we didn't even want that as an alternate? Or do we, yeah, I think we wanted to, yeah, I think we wanted to even do it. Are you shaking your head, but?
Just, we've got both options, so I think the implications of a bid alternate is that, as you mentioned. We have those costs, we know what they are, if we choose to include them in the total project cost, not just the roofs, but the full dugout cost. If we choose to elect not to do that alternate, we would examine the possibility of looking at a local contractor to develop the structure, what we're, what we want is exactly what C B K L has. We want that's what they have, they've done it beautifully, they've done it efficiently, they function. Um that's what we want, that's not what's specified, so.
Yep.
So that's what we, that's what we'd like to explore, if the if the cost is actually bid very reasonably, you know, we'll have that to consider.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we want to be able to, at the ultimate, um exploring the cost. Uh savings and outcome that might issue, might issue with a local contractor, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's that's the, that's the option we're after, if that's. If that's not what we're asking for, then we need to be corrected about what we're asking for, but I think that's, that's clearly not what we want.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're going for, so um so you don't want a metal structure, you're looking for a wooden structure similar to K L.
Those, the picture was in the paper, now I've seen it, so the structuring, you know, you've seen me that, if you've been to local youth sports place, places, register, youth softball association, it's like, like a dog cage, it's like a three sided.
Yep.
Aluminum fence or or a uh, what am I, chain link fence. With a shady structure, what K L has achieved is a. Pin or steel, they've got a wraparound, so you get protection from wind, protection from rain, protection from sun, they've got that. Um and a and a metal roof, right, they live with their metal roof, so. This is a totally different animal, it's a different solution.
Yeah.
The other, the other pieces that, as you mentioned, the cost estimated for those chain link structures came in higher than you'd anticipated.
Yes.
And much higher than we would expect based on what K L has experienced.
Right.
So it's both things, we want to, we want to be efficient with the cost, but we also need to achieve an outcome that has been successful, you know, ready as well.
In K L, if anyone hasn't seen it, which I hadn't seen it before. But I think to do this, if this is what we want, it can't even be a bid alternate, because the way it's designed right now is just a metal structure, the metal roof, the. You know, so, that's what we'd be giving.
Right, it could, it could be bid as an alternate, but we would have to develop plans in detail for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for a hundred and sixty thousand, I think we can have somebody put this up.
That's ours, yeah, so then we could eliminate it as a bid alternate and just eliminate it.
Yep, and so essentially we would just leave. Leave that, leave the uh dugout locations as grass, um so we'd be coming after this project and build that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so then, oh, well.
Okay, I was gonna say, I mean, we had some discussion on the post tensioned concrete before, we should leave that in because there's potential for that to be donated.
Right. Um. And as you may recall, there was a really good explanation about how that might be a long term cost savings, but not short term project costs, instead of having long term. Uh lifespan implication and cost implication for the overall.
Yeah, so that can be put.
We still, we still need to look at that cross site, that's changed.
Right, right.
Higher cost of everything.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Um hockey rink lighting, I don't think that hurts to keep in there. Um the trail connection to twelve street, did you guys look at traffic on twelve street at all, considering that?
We did not, um we, we included that um. You know, based off of a, it's a a desire from the city to include a a future trail connection, um. It it, should it be a uh bid and bids come back favorably, then we have to move forward with it, so. Sure. Something to maybe explore as part of this project, but not necessarily something we have to move forward with.
Yeah, we did not do any. Okay, traffic studies in that area.
What I'm seeing there just is, is we put that trail and it's gonna increase. Flow of traffic to that area, tournaments are bigger events, parking along twelve street both sides. That's like a major thoroughfare for us in town, I don't know if you'd call it a arterial minor, major. But if you have a car on both sides and then you got two way traffic, it's hard enough to get through there, and then if we're encouraging bike traffic for kids through there. And you add that in, you know, they're riding bikes past. Uh car mirrors, those sidewalks, um. So e- even if the bid came back favorable for that, I would have some big reservations, because I think we want to get. Traffic flow and parking to the other side, to these other entrances to the parking lot at Pierce. Rather than encouraging more flow, um because, you know, semi trucks aren't allowed on it, it's still bigger vehicles as well. And as soon as we stack parking on both sides, that's gonna, that's gonna be a real problem.
Yeah, I think the parking can be, you know, no parking on one side versus not, but you're directing kids to a street and not a sidewalk. That's my concern, I mean, I I'm fine with having a bid in there.
Yeah, it's the birthday at the bit.
That would be, you know what I'm saying, it's like.
Connection to no trail.
I know that we're, we're doing the same thing at Pierce, but.
It's a connection to no trail, it's like, it's it's in, it it came, you know, it was last comments about connect, trail connecting in the, in the broader parks and trails. Parks and trails uh dialogue in our community, but really, it's not. Trail connections at the beginning of the opportunity for a trail to exist, but there isn't an actual trail.
Now, Pierce has the same issue, but I I think I'm a little bit relieved, I still like traffic on Pierce.
Share the the feedback and person mention, or?
You might want to put the stop sign back in where it used to be, if we do have that trail coming out right there so that.
Yes.
Cars aren't whipping through. And, you know, right before the, the entrance to the park there.
Yeah, tent.
Because we used to have it there and then we removed it.
We didn't have time to have a park quarter meeting to kind of discuss over the the trail extension, so I. I emailed it out to them and I got um, uh three out of five replied, I got three back. Every one of them wanted to connect the trail out there, um and I did give them concerns about, you know, the traffic on twelve street, it's gonna be extra parking out there. Most of their feeling was if we spread it out more. Um thirty is the major arterial street, which is high water. Broadway and Pierce are both arterial streets, both streets are arterial street. I think Pierce has less travel than twelve, obviously, if you know that. But that's all I got to.
The other thing about dispersion of local use.
Yeah.
Dispersion of.
Anyway, anyway, I talked to some neighbors and stuff who got some feedback. And I mean, I remember when I lived down on, by the ball field, Algeny. It was full, you know, I mean, you pull out of the alley, you're like, oh, that was one side of the traffic, so I totally get the part of. Concern of a tight volume of twelve street.
So when you say the park commissioners want to see connection to the trail, are they meaning the bike trail, like, are they thinking like all the? Trail infrastructure that comes, what what trail are they imagining there's connection to?
They, it's not really a trail continuation, but it's access to another street.
Okay.
Or kind of dispersal of, okay, you got four different ways to come to this park from. But there's no sidewalk. But there's no sidewalk on twelve, you know, there's been a lot of talk about people petitioning for sidewalk on twelve. Um, we haven't seen anything on that yet, so um I was kind of very reluctant on that.
Okay, so anyway, conclusion is we can get the information and we can decide if it's favorable or do it better.
I guess.
Keep it in.
Yeah, I I guess.
It's fine to keep it in.
But if there's not the story support goes down, all that is.
What the?
I don't, if there's not majority support for it now, I guess, I don't know why we're asking them, but we Dean and John are here, so.
Does it cost extra to get a bill?
I don't think at this point, no, it's a nature.
It doesn't matter, I mean.
And then the other comments that I had, kind of just thinking about it. And we have lengthy discussions about is pulling out the warming house as a bid alternate. Um, because uh obviously the the project, you know, um. There there's big cost increases, and so we debated if we could get better pricing on the warming house. If we did it ourselves, maybe in twenty twenty four, instead of up up as part of the product. The problem is the site needs an electrical panel, and originally the electrical panel was gonna go inside that building. So if we 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 wanted to do a bill bid alternate, John has to spend some time designing uh the option of. You just build us an electrical panel and we'll come and build the structure later, so that's a little bit of his time. But I think we felt like we'd rather know what is your price contractor to build us the warming house? And give us the option to pull it, because it's not required for the grant, we think it's very important to accomplish. But we again wonder if we. Try to project manage this ourselves, we could get better pricing and scooping it up into this mega mega project, so. Um. And then I think, again, we're looking at the illustrious city of Kellogg, we've accomplished a lot, but volunteer.
Involvedments, you know, I think there is a community will to see some aspects of this accomplish. The community can't build the tennis court, the community can't, you're certain you'll never even get a merger. But we we still think there's a will there in the treaty to see that in such a facility, it's so important. And it's achievable, the community will, that's sort of the intent, it's not strictly a cost saving thing, it's partly a cost saving thing, although. If there's an element of getting community involved in this, because you know there's a fundraising movement, which some people can give up their time and labor and some people think about their funds. We think that that still remains a possibility.
So um I think you're okay with it, it just recorded some of these time. And um I think the final.
Yeah, not so much the panel itself, but just kind of indicating on a adjusting the plans, indicating what's included with the base thing, what's included with the alternate, and there's a little bit of rework.
And as you foreshadowed, Tony, a little bit of a consideration called a sidewalk, you know, that that joins to the, you know, the concrete element of the project, which, you know, Tony foreshadowed.
Yeah, yeah, water sewer connection to at least some suburbs and everything.
Yep, yep, exactly, yeah.
And then I think a final question that I had was, we didn't wanna dissect it too much, but can you comment on? The pricing for fencing, um because that indeed is very expensive.
Yep.
Um, is there a benefit for us handling that ourselves? Or is it, is what we're looking at and reflected in fencing prices mainly just what it is, no matter?
Who's managing it.
Manages it.
I'd say generally what we're seeing is just increase of the in material costs, so. Whether it's done by the contractor or the city, um you know, you may save a little bit from the mark out from the contractor, but it's not gonna be. I think significant enough to warrant um your time on it, so. It, yeah, fencing prices have gone up dramatically over the last couple of years, and that's just what we've seen on on recent projects that we've been. Um, so that's where we pulled our data from for putting these estimates together, and so we, you know, we wanna give you a reasonable. Reasonable cost um to anticipate for that, it is, it's not the, it's not labor, it's not anything like that, it's primarily material cost.
Okay, and then one other question I got was. What is the change order process? Like, we got the bid, we say something we don't like. The new line item to do change orders, um or is whatever goes in the bid, we're sticking with?
Yeah, so generally what goes in the bid, um you would have to accept the bid from a contractor, and then you'd have the opportunity to. If there's items that you may not want in the project, up to a certain threshold, you can negotiate with that contractor to see if you can. Come to an agreement in terms of removing the might else. Um, nothing's for certain, um but you have an opportunity to kind of negotiate.
So a slight adjustment to what's in the packet, and these conversations are ongoing and getting, you know, great information from Jonathan in real time, so. Um, we would, as I'm hearing people's, they're saying their opinion, we we would have this bid processing include. The broad bid as described, the alternate bid of an upgrade to the tennis football courts, which we agreed to a prior decision. Um, the addition of the happy replaying, the. Removal of the dugouts or the with a completely separate. That's the first thought, what do we want? For that alternate, we just wanna remove?
I thought we were gonna remove it.
Remove it, okay, so straight alternate bid three.
Yeah.
Alternate bid four, um the administrative was at Y I for future discussion. And alternate bid five is the structure. That supports concession rest during the warming. As a separate. Generally, or call it. Project in the project.
Yeah, so we just replace the dugout with uh. Warming house.
Right. Everybody.
And then just taking on your engineering estimates, the concrete slab to finally.
Yep.
Okay.
And that requires a resolution distraction, right? Okay. All right, anything else for us to consider, you know, your back will be relatively soon?
Yep, yep, so we'll we'll continue to progress the plan, we'll have those ready, um. End of March and anticipate bidding um at the end of March.
Sounds good, so fabulous, thank you for all the detail, it makes it become more real every time I talk.
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. All right, and we have this ad item, Katie, Jonathan, we understand if you can't stay, um very good to have your time. Um, we have this item on general business, ten four.
So just to clarify, we're authorizing, I think we need to take a vote to authorize bidding of the. There's no resolution, but the action is.
Authorized that.
Authorized bidding on a project.
So as stated, we operate a whole bit of pro, we've been a little bit of the project, it's the um ultimate kind of stated straight in the. Dugouts and adding a separate structure for concessions warming for changes.
I'll figure.
Second from Tim, any further discussion? Falls in favor, Sam?
Aye.
All right, Tony.
Okay, um.
That was a high for me.
Thanks, Dean.
Street commission. Request for residential parking only from the N E C agent down to the alley. Which is approximately three to four block.
Yeah, no, not.
Residential parking only.
You mean city residence.
Yeah, so they had, street commission had a discussion. And we went back and forth on quite a while, we know that this has been revisited proudly, uh six, seven times since I worked in the city. Um, and we know it's public street, you know, however we put limitations on it, but. The resident brought up some of its concerns about, you know, people coming down here temporarily parking, going to the Eagle Center. Falling up in campers, different things, and then, of course, we're gonna direct traffic in there for buses. You know, is that gonna be even worse when the Eagle Center gets opened up whole swing of the summer and, you know, there's a lot of traffic down there, so. Um, the other thing that we don't know about, um and you and I had talked about this. A couple hours after that meeting is. We don't know, we think that the Eagle Center might have a conditional use permit that directs them to find parking. And maybe it was a transfer building back in the day, but I I think it was a hotel, but it might be the Eagle Center.
On that either, so long story short, I I've heard this concern about twenty times, and I've sort of thought. What's the big deal? I walk that route all the time, yes, absolutely, absolutely what the resident is saying does happen. But some features have changed, we have started reroute traffic there, and I think what. Turned my ear in a different direction is the residents claim is that when the city developed the site, which I interpreted as the Eagle Center, but twenty things made in the hotel. We don't know, we have to do a little homework on this, when the city developed the site, the conditional use permit required. The 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 relocation or relocation of parking. At, as I understand it, the location of granted barns, that was supposed to be the ultimate site for parking for that additional use of that facility. Um, that's different, that's different than a simple, you know, resident doesn't want this parking occurring near or at their front door. That's a trade off of the city, uh you know, options new, and it it sounds like it was never realized, I don't know the facts on it. And what I advise the resident to do, and I said you can absolutely include me or not include me, I think, you know, if you wanna just make it clear directly, um speak with our plan. I think there's a broader planning implication for what we do with major traffic generators, and none of our other commercial business generate traffic of that magnitude. If they did, they probably have conditional use permit requirements applied to their project. Uh related to permits, so I don't know, you have a institutional memory that can lead us in the right direction, or Dean does. But but that's different, simply saying I don't like this, it's it's unsatisfying to me. Isn't real, and I don't hear that every day, week, but saying that the city created the problem and refuses to do anything about it is a different issue. And I wanna at least have the time to inquire on that and figure out what we what we do know. And um what I wasn't expecting, which I think was very good citizenship, is that the resident also communicated with the Eagle Center, and the Eagle Center. Did not find that to be advantageous either, when when large campers cur and ob- obligate the first block or even car the block. Right next to the center, it's not a good experience for people coming and going, and and I agree, as a resident, I don't like that either, when I tried it right in that stretch, when their camp was there, it's different. Um, it's different than when a commercial entity has a truck in, you know, it's gonna be a quick drop off, it's not there for six hours, it's not somebody, you know, sort of using it as a free. Parking spot in the river, so they can sort of enjoy the river, um so it does affect that, the other thing that's unique about about warrants. And I I I totally speak out of both sides of my mouth on this, but it it functions like a trail, by virtue of only having long way traffic. And the fact that there isn't a designated trail there, and yet it's the obvious place for people to walk and bike and scooter and all kinds of. It has sort of a trail function di- different to other streets, so it's that, there's that on another two, so I just, I like Christie's. Box on the under, she obviously completely understands the parking scenario that's been studied, you know, sort of decision on that. But there's an increased volume of attendance expected, it may or may not be true, there's an unsatisfied conditional use permit criteria. Don't know, don't know, but um but what I didn't expect is that got rocks of streets today, I just learned about this, like, yeah, maybe two days ago, so I I have. We're gonna just kind of work through this at least initially with the planner, and that's what I'd like to see happens. A little bit of inquiry before we say, go ahead and read, at what's read decided, and you know, they haven't made a decision, we had an issue before then. If they decided to sign the read, no Eagle Center parking. I get where that would satisfy the intent, what they're hearing.
Yeah.
But we don't even know if the Eagle Center wants that speed.
That's my, you know, I I don't wanna have anything, so maybe another guess, maybe it should be resident, resident only parking.
Only something like that, so I think there was probably some some sort of uh standards about what the language is, you know. Um, it's not the Eagle Centers. Parking, I mean, if you want, if you want a parking spot, you can say, no parking, by that it will be total, but that's not what's at play here, this is a public street. We're wanting it to remain some, you know, we want residential use to remain, we're dealing with a very specific issue, so. That's how, you know, that's why, that's why I learned about it, this is how can I have a little churn of events in my mind before I was like, I don't really care about my house, do what you need to. You're working, I I live near and almost in the commercial district, but there are different curators on that street, um it does not have sidewalk on both sides. There it just, it has a different function, you know, Carolyn said, that's right, right, parking, I think not, me too, because you're drawn naturally down that street, now we've got to see, can't. Do that or handy right now, yeah, you can't, right, so, anyway. It's natural, why, that has to be like the laziest decision is to park right here, even if you're not utilizing any of our business, it's just because it's a nice, it's a central place to get out and. Take us, you know, take us through all, whatever.
In the end, too, we get to decide, you know, if we put the plans up, is it is it enforceable?
Exactly.
From the B D or the deterrent, or, you know, so on. I know, that's, came over for Christmas, I got a ticket.
Yeah.
But.
Did you guys consider just like weekends and holidays or? I am.
It's just not a daily thing.
It's not a daily thing.
During the week, for limited hours.
They didn't, because they're, you know, again, this was just blocking their lot.
Yes, I've never, who's ever been anywhere that said resident only parking? Yeah, maybe, yeah, but I need, you know. I don't know, I've seen like two hour parking or one hour parking or.
We did miss one spot over by Isaac Walton Park, it's a dead end, but I think people were going in and turning around, and I stuck with whole trailer, so. I mean, it's been there for a long time, and that's, I think that's the only one that we found. You know, same that we have more in town, but.
You know, and it's gonna be even worse with the construction going on. Finding places to park, so it's like we can't even have a, like a test year, just to see, because it's not even gonna give you any results that.
You just wait for a couple of years, someone's loading three, three destruction.
Yeah, or just see if it is a problem before we. I don't know, I don't know, what did you guys ultimately decide? I don't know if we ever heard the.
We, well, we approved it, but we wanted to know the Eagle Center parking site.
Gotcha.
That's the best issue you're trying to.
Yeah.
Avoid. And I don't, in my mind, I don't think that's the right solution, I don't think it sounds, I don't think it works.
It's not inviting.
No.
Yeah.
So. But they were gonna table it, and I wish we would have tabled it so we could.
And now we're talking about it, so I think we have the authority to say that it's tabled, we wanna.
That's the only reason I brought it up today, it's like, I'd like one more, but I don't wanna wear science.
Right.
I mean, what if we even did certain vehicle restrictions, like compact cars only here. Something like that, so there's no campers, double axle type things.
It's gotta be somewhat enforceable, or it's just a visual deterrent of.
Right.
You know, it's about like uh two hour parking on Main Street.
So can we just give direction, we need to overrule the street's decision, or can we simply say we'd like to see?
Uh, let's see, it's not an appeal, it's not, maybe it's redirections back to planning.
Okay.
And street department for one month, hold them.
Yeah, for clarity, uh, streets commission has a sole authority to approve signage and there's no override on by proxy.
You found that?
No, I'm asking you, no.
Oh, I mean, usually like in my email, if it's something contentious, you know, I usually bring it here, but it looks to be a hot topic.
Yeah, okay, they're the problem solvers, they're not email determinate, not a power, not a power grab, we're just trying to come up.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so that's what we put in the change, recommendation for staff to bring this to planning and streets to evaluate the feasibility.
Hold for one month, just, yeah.
Right.
I'll wait for that.
We're second.
Go second.
Go first, you can tell in a second, and Jean, any further discussion? All is in favor, Sam?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, all right, thanks for bringing that, and thanks to the streets, honestly, I didn't expect it to come to them, I thought it was gonna happen especially before they got it, so I appreciate their input, and it's a novel. Solution, and you know, the more heads that can be, you know, applied to something that might work better.
I was gonna request for one year, we don't have some for this year too.
All right, so I'm approving the donations, I'd asked Brian if he would reuse, there's a a lot of explanation for that, so we can really just approve the donation.
Yeah, these are for the library, twenty five dollars anonymous in memory of Marie Miller. Two hundred and fifty dollars from Carol and Steve Scott, and then a conglomerate donation by a lot of different people. Of fourteen hundred and ninety dollars for Eugene Woodley, uh for a memorial. Uh, Jeff and Mule, Gerald and Andrea Erickson, Robert and Joe Woodley, Paul and Kim Scott, John and Jack and Craig. Uh, the W P L staff, what was that saying? Public, public labor staff, uh, Mary Ann Par, Gerald and Mary Joel Longback, Mary Fong, Craig and Nancy Felton, Gary and Dablinsky. Phil and Patricia Carls Jr., John and Sandy Wolf, Jim and Mary O'Brien, Jennifer Laurie Perry, John and Swampey. Earl and Tyson, Thomas and Margaret Anderson, James and Rachel Larson, Robert and Diane Shield. Debbie Schuater, Ruth Freeze Diggins, family and friends of Eugene Woodley, and John and Marlo Senet. R F Hecht, that's Robert, and Sharon Hecht, Jim and Kathy Sherhammer, Mary, uh excuse me, Gary and Mary Bluehager. Wallace and Diane Anderson, and anonymous as well.
We have a question, you're second, I'll wait.
Go.
The second.
Go second.
Washington, Brandon, second, and Tim, all is in favor, Sam?
I don't know.
All right, and then, and then Dean, uh you might, or, I can't, we're slow over the relation right now. He's on that.
We did it last year now.
I think you said it's your head to do it. Don't, don't. Don't, don't. That's why you're gonna, I'm sorry. That was an application. We'll find out what it is, and then we'll need to train, and it won't open up for me. Here goes. It was your, your, your esteemed council president, that's what we decided. With your agreement. What's the action you guys want open?
Uh, this, I had a date, I just woke up.
Right.
Six P M.
Yeah.
On the thirteen, they haven't decided, uh, of a due yet.
Okay. April thirteen, six P M.
Correct.
More details from Sam.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. With that, any announcements?
What did you say?
April thirteen. Sorry?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, six P M, all right. Otherwise we'd entertain a motion for a year.
Okay, well.
Seven. All right, I hear your question, you can stand on a second from Dean, all's in favor.